This conference will now be recorded.
Say thirty, let's stand, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, April eighth, 2025. Meeting is available by go-to meeting as well for viewing at a later date. We have an agenda in front of us, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move the three.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Pam second, call those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. For the minutes of March first, oh, April first, I'm sorry. April first, meeting and claims. I have a thing in the claims, going through it, Amanda's was missing.
Amanda's?
Bear for wages.
Because that would have been wages from two weeks ago, so she went to bed here.
Okay. I just want to double check the board sign that it wasn't in there.
All right, thank you. That's all I had about the claims.
I only decided also she, she had me go through it to make sure she didn't miss it, so I didn't say it either.
You have a motion for me, I first?
I, I do have a correction to the minutes, though. So, at last week's meeting, I'd made a comment, and Rachel had a very brief, in regards to my comment, it was very brief, but it was accurate. And then there was a supervisor that wanted the number of edits being done to the minutes. So the edit in regards to what I said was edited incorrectly, so I need that edited correctly. And this can be verified, it's at fifty-six minutes, fifty-two seconds into the meeting. So, and I'll give this to you, Rachel, as far as what it is, but, I gotta line this up. So what I wanted to say is, and this is what I said at the meeting, we're also commenting that NIACO sent all of us a letter in regard to possibly putting together an ordinance. They declined because of the possibility of litigation, and they did not want to be part of that litigation, so they will not write an ordinance. That's what I wanted to do. And their document is public document, and we can access that too if they want to, to review the NIACO document.
You still want to make that motion, Mark?
Yes.
Mark made a motion for updated minutes? And claims, is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Todd second. Any further discussion?
On the minutes, do you want her to do word for word?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to, what I said, and it's, it's on there.
I know, but, do you want her to do the whole meeting, one for one, in the minutes?
No, that's not what I requested.
Because she does them pretty briefly.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I said the first time it was, it was brief, but accurate, but that's what I wanted there, because that's what I said.
Maybe we should tell them to do it on the minutes every week?
I didn't say that.
She does it, best she can do when it gets edited every week.
I probably put ten more words in it, yeah, but it's what I said. Yep.
Broke call, Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone have their phone on, can they turn it off?
Act back, mark.
No, it's not. It's running on. Somebody else?
Does it sound like it's coming from here?
No, it's not, no. All right. County Attorney?
Here, I don't have any.
All right, thank you. Sheriff update?
Nothing new for the board this morning, but it won't take questions anybody might have.
This looks bad, Harris. Probably gonna have to have you too.
Doesn't, doesn't sound like it.
What's that? Yeah, I could get a shot. I've been there myself, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
There were surveyors on the, on the side of the road in the ditch. Is that not considered home on the property that's?
That's correct, so if you look at definitions in the Iowa code, there's roadway and there's highway, so the highway's the travel portion, and the roadway's meant something. So they can be there, yes? Yep. Anyone else? Board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Department head discussion.
Hi, guys. So I know why we're all here, cop here, it's coming on Thursday. I have a board, so, I'm done, no, I just have a feeling. I talked about the GPS monument update last week, that was signed, that's not going to begin until July, is when the first part of that project is going to start, just want to let you know that's in the, in the process of that. It should be, it's the next fiscal year, is when that'll be done, which is actually very helpful for me. I, last week, I had, I had some days out of the office, both for the grandchild and then help things, so I'm kind of playing catch-up this week with what we talked about, but I'm not too concerned, I'll put the, those are grindstone, get that done. Another thing that some of the department heads has requested that I bring to your attention is with the website, there's been a lot of talk about possible upgrades with a vendor that's called Neapolitan Labs. I've been trying to work with them on how we can do some upgrades, and we're getting stuck. They just asked that I bring it to you as a possible problem that we're looking at. I don't have capacity right now to take on an extra project, but I promised I would bring it to your guys' attention as something that we might look at in the future, is an upgrade to the website, just to be able to disseminate information a little better than we're able to now. That's the main things that I got going on, and of course, all the phones and everything like that, I'm still working on. That's all, that project is on time as of now. All the phones have been ordered, which is good, because I avoided any increase in cost on those, we got it in ahead of time. And I just gotta work through that there, so that's mainly what I, what I'm gonna be working on this week, does anybody have any questions?
Regards to Neapolitan?
Yes.
I talked with them at ISAC one time for economic development. I believe that's where two of the used hours.
There's quite, yeah, they specialize in county government, because I met them at ISAC as well, and they've done multiple counties around the area, including Saragordo, and they do pretty good work. I know Public Health contacted them about their website, which we talked about months back. So, they're gonna be, I, I'm not gonna speak, Republic Health actually hasn't been involved in that process, but I know they're looking at that vendor as well.
This is Laura, I'm actually working with, Jess and I are working with them closely right now to work on our new website, and they've been great to work with.
Yeah, that's been my experience, too.
They do our election one time.
Oh, that'd be good, if you guys want to look at something as a.
It's in need of updating.
It is, it's just that, yeah, it'll be another department-wide thing, and I don't have time right now to start it, but that's something we can look at in the future.
In regards to the agreement with the city, in regards to those, the servers, you talked about that, they questioned me, and I just said that you were gonna get something drawn up to do that, is that?
Yeah, that's correct, there, there's two different ways that we do it, I think I kind, I don't, I don't remember, slide tweak was a little bit of a blur, but, there, either it can be charged by user, which is a flat fee per user I would be in charge of providing support to, that lets it scale if I were to increase my salary, so we don't get caught behind, because right now, if we were to do what my currency salary is per hour, next year when that would increase, we wouldn't be able to capture that without a new agreement. It's, I'm a little out of my, my knowledge of this, because it's not something I've dealt with with third-party departments, so I'm really doing the research to make sure that I do it right, especially with other counties. So, getting them started and working was the first step. Now I'm going to try to figure out the best way to get that document made that makes the most sense for the PD and for the county.
That, that's fine, they, they just questioned me, and I just wanted to know if we're still working on it.
Yes, we're still, yeah, still working on it, I want to get it solid, it's something that makes sense, I'm just taking a little more time to make sure. All right. See you guys Thursday.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah.
So I had gotten my expense report from Lindsay last week, and after looking at it, I need to amend my wages portion of my budget, because when I did my budget last year, Dawn had an initial end date, and then after attending some IFRS and retirement seminars, she found out that carrying her appointment into the next quarter would give her a substantial amount each month in retirement, so she carried her end date over into the next year, so I need to amend my budget for the wage function. It's like five thousand. So I don't know what else I need to do, this is enough, you guys.
So you, you won't be overstaffed because she's into the next quarter, then, I guess that's my first question?
Overstaffed?
Well, I mean, if she was gonna be gone, I would assume that she had someone to fill that vacancy, but now she's gonna be extending.
No, so she's, she's done, she's retired, it's just since she carried it over from October into January, this past January, I didn't account for that in my budget, because from the beginning she had. No, no, I mean, like, it's just, I'm now seeing it in my expenses. Yeah.
I was confused, okay. By June thirtieth, correct? I mean, to end this year, you need?
Like five thousand.
Yeah. You're needing to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five budget by the five thousand because of that.
Correct, yeah.
Sorry, I was confused.
No, it's okay, I probably didn't explain it well.
I do recall she did stay longer.
Which I don't fault her, a substantial amount every month after retirement for carrying over just a couple months, I would do it too.
Reach out to anybody else?
We can, I think there's two other topics on the agenda that we'll need a bunch of them in for, too. Set a date next week. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I wanted to put on the agenda for next week. Discuss. Word correctly. Discussion on changes with county solar services.
Department head, the COO, they sent us an email, and the COO is still waiting. I got, I know company that will come and look at it, and see what they can do.
I'm reaching out to Hinkle this week, I talked to Dave yesterday.
We should get that going before it's.
I know. I, I want to talk to Hinkle and make, because we're still under a ten-year warranty, so.
So you may hold off for once, please?
I would appreciate that, I will let you know if they do not do anything.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other department head? No? All right. County engineer?
Just a couple updates, the bridges on Indigo, the north one, the, the crossing there is complete, they're within soft form, we're hoping by, probably in the next week for sure, that we should have it open, depending on the weather, so, that project's moving on pretty quick. Next week I'll be in, at NACE in Chicago. Can we put on review and action, possible action on the DOT budget program for the twenty-second, I believe, would be the following one? We usually have it in by the fifteenth, but I think with the, the pushback and everything, I think we have to have, with, with the way the process works, now we can have it till signatures by the end of the month, so we're okay yet, and turning in on the DOT program and budget. And then with the project that we just started, I think it started yesterday on the Echo, the bridge there, that's a project that's a payout of secondary road fund, get reimbursed by the DOT, so I'm gonna look at my, my budget there and see if we have the funding, because it's a, it's a same, it's a hundred percent out, hundred percent back in, but I gotta show that I'm spending it. I think I got one point two million in the county budget for construction, and with the way the, the River Road project and the other project are going, I don't know if they'll be, come out of that budget this fiscal year, they might carry over, I want to make sure I have the funding in there. And then with the engineer inspection stuff, I might need to amend the engineering side of the budget a little bit, so I'm gonna go through and, and get the numbers squared away, so we have the funding there, so we know we can spend it. So I'll be working on that also, so, that's about all I have, the River Road plans, I've just gotta make some minor adjustments, I'm reviewing them, and then the other ones are in production, I want to see, we're gonna try to do some shoulder strengthening on our own, so we're setting up a moderator to kind of peel off the shoulders, so we can kind of strengthen them before we pay over them, so, I want to see if that process is gonna work, if we'll really get it too far out, so. And then we're getting our salts, we'll see some bills coming in in the next planning session for salt, but we've got our order for next year.
Already done.
Well, you just get out of winter, and they want you to know what you're gonna use next year for your order, so, bullshit going into next year, hope we don't need it. That's all I've got for you this morning.
Thank you.
All right.
Approve treasurer's report for March.
Morning.
Morning. We made it through March. Taxes collections, so you guys have the reports. Motor vehicles paid to state was two hundred forty thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, ninety-eight cents. Motor fees to general basic was fourteen, four sixteen, fifty-two. Postage to the general fund was nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. We issued two hundred fifteen driver's licenses for fifteen oh five for revenue. Six of those were out of county, so they paid a ten-dollar convenience fee. Organ donor to date to state was a hundred thirty-five, and new registration paid to state was two hundred thousand, three seventy-five, eighty-four. New registration to general basic was two thousand, four hundred forty. I want to note that, two thousand, four hundred forty, so last year in March, new registration fees to general basic, the new registration paid to state was two hundred one thousand, this year it's two hundred thousand, and we got two thousand, four forty. Last year we got two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So, a vast improvement. Total motor vehicle driver's license collected was four hundred sixty thousand, four sixty-two, thirty-four this year. A year ago it was four hundred twenty-one, and of that we got eleven thousand, this year we got nineteen thousand, three ninety-nine, fifty-two. So it is legislatively, that was passed, has made a vast difference in my budget, as we said, hoped it would, so, that's a nice change to see. Property taxes collected was ten million, six hundred twenty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and one cent. Penalties collected was eighteen sixty-six, that's those people that come in and, some people just choose to pay in March, and they know that they're paying one and a half percent interest, and they just choose to do that, so, we got some people that forgot, and, but some people, it's just a choice, because they get their income taxes this time of year, and sometimes that just works better in people's budgets, so. Special assessments collected, twenty-two twelve, we had a couple people pay off their special assessments, which we've talked before, they're by code, they pay nine percent interest, so, I encourage them, I like to talk to them, I'm not a financial advisor, but if some people choose to pay it off, just because it is a considerable savings to them to do that. Tax sales certificates we gave, we had one for one thousand fifty-eight. Prepaid taxes futures, five thousand, four sixty-one, thirty-two, that's those people that, individuals, usually it's a farmer that sells farmland, and they get out their stubs from September, and then they pay the same amount in March, so, just a clerical error. And then we don't refund that, because at this point, they probably chose to use that expense on their taxes, so we don't refund, because I don't feel it's, you know, an IRS, I don't want to get involved with an IRS issue of whether or not they did pay taxes, so we just encourage them to either send us a new check, or they put it towards futures that are in September collections, so. That was two of the bigger amounts we had done that for. Interest on investments was sixty-six thousand, eight hundred seventeen, seventy-eight. And then miscellaneous receipts, we got fifty-two from other departments, and for the amount collected were seven hundred ninety-two thousand, seven seventeen, eighty-three. So, processed revenues in our office was eleven million, nine hundred seventy-two dollars, nine hundred seventy-two thousand, thirty-three dollars and eighty cents.
Was it fifty-two or forty-two?
For where?
Miscellaneous receipts.
I have fifty-two. If I shade for virgin, it might be a typo.
Okay.
I add that in later, so.
That's fine. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve?
I would move to make a motion. To approve the treasurer.
I'll second that. Tom made a motion, I am second, any further discussion? Broke call, Todd?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Mark?
So a little information for our office, because I was here for department head, we are ninety-nine point six seven percent collected first half, ninety-six point six four for the second half, so overall we're at ninety-eight point one one five, which is about average per year, so. Tax sale due third money in June, we'll be sending out the link notices in the next few weeks, just to remind people that they don't have them paid by that time, they'll go on the tax set. When I started we were averaging about eighty, now we're down to about forty, so it's a good improvement. I have figured out the operating funds, I gave Rachel and said a resolution, and said to Elizabeth as well, I think we're gonna have to transfer about forty-five dollars, I already done about twenty dollars, we got another twenty-seven and eighty, this is from the previous two fiscal years, that you guys will have to do a resolution first. Not a lot, once I got the process going, and the monies went down, I thought, well, I didn't want to just do an average, because I didn't think we were gonna owe it as much as I anticipated, so.
Shannon, I just want to, so, it's interesting that, since the first of the year, I've got several people that have asked if they need an appointment, and I'm telling them, no, you're not a hundred percent guaranteed if they're busy or someone's away, but be patient, and most generally they'll probably work in.
If individuals call, we tell them it's preferred, but not required. Like I said before, if Grandma comes in and we know she's done the beauty shop, we're gonna work her in, because that's, it's not, you know, if they don't check on the internet. The thing is, is with, like, students that want to get their school permit, I had one yesterday that wanted to make an appointment for school permit. We log into the driver's license system, and we look and see, we put in the, we give them a school permit, and we check to make sure the driver's ed is in there. Yesterday's was not, so, if they would have come in cold, they have to go back to school and make, have them put the driver's ed information into the DOT system. Also, we remind them that they have to have the signed paper from the school, because a lot of them forget that. Sometimes the kids don't tell their parents that they failed the drive part, and they have to drive. We only drive on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we had a parent a few weeks ago that came in at three o'clock on a Friday afternoon, and was not happy that their child had to drive, because they had taken off work, so they wasted their time. Also, we have a lot of employers in the county that have foreign nationals that are coming in to work for them, and they come in groups of like three or four, and they take about forty-five minutes each to do. So, you've got almost two and a half to three hours, that they are the appointments. So if you come in, you know, they try to get it early in the morning, but sometimes, you know, if you call in that morning, we can usually get you in that day, because of that instance, they had planned ahead, but sometimes when it's raining, they want to get in, but we try to work people in, we had a seasonal CDL driver that, he just got back from Arizona yesterday, talked to the elevator, and they want him to start working today. So he came in, we fit him in, we definitely can fit people in, it's just that there's certain things that it's, we can triage stuff and prevent them from doing two or three trips, or having a bad situation with a parent-child, so. We encourage people to call, just so that we can, I mean, we don't make everyone call, but if they call, we can look them up and make sure that they're gonna be able to go through smoothly, so. It happens, mostly when they call, yeah, we'll fit you in if you want to wait, but appointments do go first. And when those people that show up at ten to four, when the department closes at four, and we've got a four twenty appointment already going, we're not gonna stay late and not get in trouble with the state by not posting our revenues, because the state requires that we post all driver's license revenues to their account that day. So we do close down driver's licenses at four. So it's not required, it's just, just preferred, we will work them in, but if they have the bad timing of being, you know, in the middle of four foreign nationals, they're gonna have an hour and a half wait at least. And people, and the students that are wanting to, you know, Wednesdays are terrible, don't walk in on a Wednesday, because that's when school, you know, they don't have school, so that we have a lot of parents that those days get stacked, so. Last Wednesday we only took walk-in, because the state updated all of our equipment on the driver's license side. We had a new scanner, we got a new testing computer, we got an issuance computer and a new printer, so, and so we had, just told people to walk in, if they called, we just said, come in, but we encouraged them to come in the afternoon, because we were scheduled in the morning, North County was the afternoon, so, but it took about four hours. We usually know what's going on in our office, we try to.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Good information.
Approve auditors' quarterly report. Want me to talk this time?
Yeah.
We have one liquor license for five hundred eighty-five dollars, flat books, two hundred nineteen dollars, fifteen cents in one item. I want to talk about flat books, because we had a lot of comments. They do cost twenty-seven dollars, that's the same price as when I started here in twenty eighteen. It's literally the cost of the flat books, I would sell them for, we aren't making any money on them. There is change on this one, because we had a manual map of people, but this, we haven't raised it in, what is that, seven years? So, we just sell it at the cost that we buy them at. Misleading is fees, so copy is seventy-five dollars. Elections, we had a special election, forty-three oh two, sixty-five, and passport fees, twenty-three, forty-five, for a total of seventy-five, twenty-six, and eighty cents. Thank you. Motion to approve?
I got a motion.
Mark made a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Jim, second? Any further discussion? Broke call, Jim?
Aye.
Sydney?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Motion passes. Zoning commission recommendation regarding engagement with Tim Whipple.
Hi.
Good morning.
I just have a, a letter that I'm gonna read out publicly, and then I can provide a copy to Rachel to put in the minutes, or just to have on hand. So, on Wednesday, April second, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock PM, the Mitchell County Planning and Zoning Commission held a meeting to discuss various topics, one topic including the recommendation for or against hazardous pipeline ordinance for Mitchell County. There was much discussion from the zoning commission regarding the possibility of in ordnance, including but not limited to the engagement letter from Tim Whipple, the costs associated with utilizing the services, a reiteration that the zoning commission themselves do not feel qualified enough to draft an ordinance due to legalities associated with the situation, state legislature stances, but most important, but the most important discussion they wanted you all to be aware of was that they stated safety is the number one issue for the citizens of Mitchell County. A motion and a second to move forward with a recommendation for the Board of Supervisors to sign a letter of engagement with Tim Whipple were on the floor. The commission voted, and the results were as follows, five ayes, zero nays. With there being a unanimous decision, on behalf of the Mitchell County Planning and Zoning Commission, I would like to present the recommendation to move forward with the signing of the letter of engagement with Tim Whipple. And the zoning commission would like to thank you for this opportunity to review the situation. This letter was signed and dated by myself on April third of twenty twenty-five. Is there any questions?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, there was no recommendation from them as to what the letter should contain, what they would like to have Tim Whipple write an ordinance about.
So there was a letter provided from Tim Whipple about, like, a. So there was a letter provided from Tim Whipple, a letter of engagement provided by Tim Whipple for an ordinance itself, their hazardous pipelines. He kind of laid out every single thing that would be provided by his services. I provided that letter to the zoning commission for their review. And so on their own time, they did review it. They also were able to review it sitting at the table during their workshop meeting. And so that's why they placed the recommendation to sign a letter of engagement that Tim Whipple had provided.
So they really did not recommend, like, for instance, road crossings, eminent domain, setback ordinance? They didn't recommend any specific things that he should engage in?
So they said to sign the specific letter of engagement. This one was talking about hazardous pipelines.
Sure. I understand that.
Their specific words were not sign it for hazardous pipelines, it said sign the letter of engagement from Tim Whipple.
Just for him to go ahead?
Yes.
And then they would, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. So.
Yes, Rita.
I'd like to add to that since I was sitting on that planning committee. It was my understanding that he has provided us a guideline that we as a planning committee are still engaged in how it is written. And that was part of our discussion as well, that it's not just he's going to write it and you, you know, we are actually engaged to make sure that we are aligned in the direction he's going. You also, the other thing is, this is not, you know, we are not a standalone county that's doing this. There's several counties he's already been engaged with. So the thought was, because a concern is, of course, that there should be some added value in that, that there's other ones that have been worked through, that that's, again, one of the reasons that we make an extra recommendation for this particular gentleman because that is what he's engaged in with other counties.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we complete an engagement letter with Tim Whipple. We have no action.
Action.
There's no action. Okay. Okay. So I'm sorry. I apologize.
It is just an agenda coming to us, telling us the recommendation, and then we'll proceed with the next steps.
Can I, can I read maybe for the group or the other supervisors who also have the initial letter that Tim Whipple's engagement letter is for more than just one thing? So it would be for permits regarding highway right-of-way permitting, the survey activities within the county relating to projects, the participation or pending cases. He's also spoke about survey activities, ordinances, and/or ordinances relating to pipeline ordinance or hazardous pipelines. His responsibilities would be attending regular and special meetings and so forth related to that, reviewing, drafting, if applicable, and negotiating ordinances and resolutions, advising our county on legal and regulatory matters, and representing the county. So my understanding, and I confirm that, is that his letter of engagement is the first step and the county board of supervisors would determine at what priority each of those items or any of those items would be. So I just thought I would share when you spoke about the engagement letter for Tim Whipple.
We left out one part. It says at this time, the scope does not include defending the county against various legal claims, including administration claims and state federal litigation.
Correct.
So he's aware that this could, he's aware that this could go to litigation also. And then further on, it says their firm is willing to consider changing the scope of the resident, of the representation. And then there would be another engagement letter if that was to happen.
For their activities. Correct. That if there is, is extenuating litigation or other situations, that that would be contracted as well. This was the initial letter that was sent to the Board of Supervisors after a conversation that Chairperson Sidney and I had with him back on March 7th. So.
And to be clear, if they even consider to represent us, there's no guarantee that they would, so if that's what that says.
That is, that is correct. That is correct. But they can't do anything until a letter of engagement is signed. But I just wanted to reiterate that it's not just one individual thing that would be covered, that there are various facets, and the county determines what the priority is and the scope.
Any other questions for Amanda?
Well, I just want to, I, there is a fee that goes with this and whose department would that come out of?
So Rachel, is there, so in our initial conversations with Tim regarding a right-of-way most recently, the, the estimation was that there would be a $5,000 fee because we had already done most of the work. It would be, you know, completion and final review and.
It would come out consultant service heads line item in the 99s.
Yes.
There's, there's a three listed at per hour rate, limited scope representation.
He is at the 390, Tim Whipple is at the 390 per hour rate that he's got listed in here.
I don't hear any more questions, so. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you want this copy?
Sure. Number 10, discussion of possible action to engage with Tim Whipple for a road crossing ordinance. I believe, Mark, but this on?
Correct.
Go ahead.
I would like to engage, put engagement letter with Tim Whipple for a road crossing ordinance since he's an expert on this and has other colleagues representing other colleagues also.
Tim and Rich are doing pretty well, writing one.
Correct. But is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Or I'm, sorry.
Didn't ask for a motion yet.
I'm sorry. We need to add a motion on the table to discuss it, I'm thinking.
We don't have to. Okay. Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I do second that.
I am second. Any further discussion?
So I apologize for jumping ahead on the last board agenda item there. And so I've discussed and, and our engineer, Rich, has discussed at great length and the amount of work that we've done to move forward on a right-of-way ordinance. We have within our county rights, the ability to protect our infrastructure, our roads, our ditches, our road crossings, and to assure that they are protected, that we have appropriate fees in place. And we spoke at great length about that last week at the meeting, and Rich spoke at great length and, and we, yes, we did do quite a bit of work in providing that. And so we would like to engage Tim and so that we can complete that process and get that right-of-way ordinance, updated right-of-way ordinance in place, and also assure that we have the appropriate fee schedule in place to accompany that ordinance.
Before I go to Betty. Would we have to have a different engagement letter though?
So I did ask Tim that and, because you'd asked me to reach out to him to see if he would come to a meeting. And, and again, like I said, he certainly would, would do that upon a letter of engagement. And I did ask if the initial engagement letter would be the one that we would sign or if there would be a new engagement letter. And if the initial one does state right-of-way and permitting and surveying activities, so we can further clarify with him if he needs to send an updated one.
I would prefer to have an updated one that has the correct wording.
So what wording in, in the initial one is, because he says regarding right-of-way permitting or surveying activities within the county, whether or not related to pipeline projects. And the participant, participation in, excuse me, pending contested case permit proceedings before the Iowa Utilities Commission in connection with certain, now that is in connection with certain pipelines. His, his engagement letter is a letter of engagement. And we would, as he stated, the Board of Supervisors would need to determine, here's our first priority, here's our, you know, upon completion of that, here's our second priority. These are the, the steps in which we would like you to act. Or if, if there's only one or two things that you want me to do, you know, keep in mind, he's been engaged for multiple reasons for other different counties. And some of them are, have many more ordinances than Mitchell County has. And so we are in the driver's seat as far as what, what we want him to do. I would amend the, the motion to say that we want the right-of-way ordinance and pertinent fees to be our number one priority for the engagement.
Well, I'm, I said last week on favor of maybe increasing our rates, but I've got two emails right here that other counties have done and are down with the state and have not passed.
So, so when you're saying there are two counties that have not passed, there have been no litigation on a right-of-way ordinance. And, and let me, there, there has been a letter that was generated that you're all aware of that was stating that Breamer County submitted a request for the IUC to weigh in. They did not, what they did was submit substantial evidence that Summit's proposed court route corridor was inconsistent with at least several of their proposed route locations. They were, Breamer County was making the IUC aware of the fact that the proposed route by Summit Carbon Solutions was inconsistent with their infrastructure and allowed them to, to allow the IUC to, to review that action and, and adjust their, their plans to comply. The IUC is a self-proclaimed quasi-judicial branch, not an actual court. And the request for clarification that I believe we read about was in no way to be construed as litigation. The IUC has taken no action to prevent any Iowa county from enacting or changing their right-of-way, their right-of-way ordinance. The, the Breamer County filing doesn't, merely notifies the IUC that they were, they were out of compliance. It is the, the right of our county to instill right-of-way ordinances to protect, as I've stated, what our taxpayers have already paid for, our roads, bridges, ditches, culverts, and, and to assure that they are safe passageways. Any company, private company that comes through is, is capable of requesting that the route corridor be modified where necessary, that steps could be taken to review. Obtaining a suitable route agreement is, is part of a longstanding process that has been used in right-of-way ordinances for, for a very long time. It's known as coordination. And so if in fact, any public, or excuse, yeah, any private company wants to burrow through Mitchell County's soil, it's, it's their due diligence to stay within that corridor or to negotiate with the county, is it such a case that this, this might be something that we could approve of? That's, that's nothing new. That's nothing new. And there, there is no court cases right now. There are court cases, litigation on actually both sides of the fence regarding setback ordinances. And I think we're aware that the first few counties of the pipeline, pipeline route are, are involved there. But we as a county also have insurance. And although none of us wants to engage in any kind of litigation, we do have insurance to cover such a thing. I liken this right-of-way ordinance to any of us putting homeowners' fire insurance or homeowners' insurance on our homes. We don't wait until the, the house is burned down. We do it ahead of time. So let's be diligent and, and, and prepare in that manner.
First of all, I'm no stranger to elective office, and I was on this board 24 years, and I currently serve as an elected official as Chair of the Board of Trustees of Mitchell County Regional Health Center. I'm here to say one thing about the road ordinance to begin with. I was present at a presentation that the Summit Pipeline had, how many years ago? A couple of years ago, I believe, at the CRC, at the event center. And I brought up to those people the fact that I happened to be on the board when they had that gas pipeline that went diagonally across Mitchell County, and the year was 1977. And I went out on every single road crossing. And I remember the superintendent in charge of those road crossings, his first name was Virgil, I don't remember the last name. He and his wife came from Oklahoma, and he'd been present for all, you know, he'd worked on those things for years. And he said to me, I can't understand, and I brought this up at these, at the meeting that Summit had, I don't understand why Mitchell County was so lenient on their restrictions for road crossings. And I said, what do you mean? And he said, well, they asked for no case crossings on gravel roads. They had case crossings on paved highways only. And I said, well, tell me about that. And he said, well, the most dangerous thing for pipelines, you know, you have a lot of give and take on county roads that are gravel, more so than you do on the paved. Why didn't the county? Well, all of that was done before I ever got on the board because they'd been negotiating with, and I don't think the previous board of supervisors or the engineer, there'd never been a pipeline crossing. So they didn't do that. And I brought that up at the meeting, and the people on Summit poo-pooed the idea. And that, that pipe that they're using is, is very, very thin. So I just want that considered. But the second thing is, I really and truly would like to see the county, I think Summit is a bully pulpit, and I think they'd do anything to rebel this through. But, you know, they don't even know at this point whether they will have the federal tax credits, and that's what they're depending on to make them money. But anyway, I think, I mean, I would have been opposed to the pipeline, no matter eminent domain, aside from the fact, because I wouldn't have any land. But I want to tell you, everybody in this county should be opposed to that pipeline due to the water usage, and it'll come from the deep aquifer. And the only way that can be recharged is rainwater. We currently don't have enough to recharge a shallow, you know, wells. So when I look at all of that, I think there needs to be a lot more. And I, if I were sitting on the board. And I, if I were sitting on the board, I would not be afraid of litigation to go ahead with more of those things. As, as Pam said, this is for road crossings initially. But I believe that the board should look at more than that. So that's really what, and another thing, and I appreciate the fact that you let me talk. I think that maybe it would be a good idea for you to change public comment time to the first thing on the board, I mean, think about it. We have that as the first thing on the board at the hospital board. Because in the open meetings law, you don't have to allow anybody to speak. But by the time the public comment time is here, you've already made all your decisions, if there were decisions to be made. And so you can't take those back. So I just, it's just a suggestion. And I think that the best thing I'm going to say is this, that the best government is at the city, county, and school level. And I just talked to Jane Bloomingdale the other day because when I heard they were doing away with the rollback. And then I looked and I thought, all of my property will be taxed at the taxable valuation instead of using the rollback. So it'll be a lot more. And then she tried to explain, but she said it'll still be a 2% limit. And I know I talked to Mayor Horgan and he said that was really going to limit them. So I think, you know, right now, they, she said there's still much work to be done. But I urge people to contact their legislators on that. I don't think a lot of people even understand the rollbacks and so on and what it could do. And I think honest to God, you know, you guys are in the cat-curt seat to do what's right. And I, I would like to see you act in the best interest of everybody in this county. And to me, water usage is a huge thing, even if I don't have any land for eminent domain. But thank you for letting me speak.
Rich, will you be working with Tim Whipple to, to write a right of way ordinance? You'll be the one enforcing it?
I would assume I'd have to, yeah.
Well, it says on here that he does not engage with engineering.
I mean, if there's questions, I mean.
So.
Were, I mean, this ordinance, it would be them written once. I'm, we will have to, we'll have to talk to him about what we have. Our situations are a little different in the county as far as what this document says now and what we have in place for ordinances. There are going to be some modifications. I have some questions to.
Have you talked to Tim?
Nope.
Which is what, you know, we had done the initial engagement and so.
In a different viewpoint, not.
Right.
Not this, so.
Yeah, I, I have a couple other, I had a meeting with Turnkey on Friday, a Zoom meeting and had some conversations. But it brought up some questions on my end about what, you know, kind of defining some things in the current ordinance that would really need clarification in the event that it would be enacted. But whatever, I'm, I'm available to assist. So if he does or doesn't, that's one thing. But I would like to look at it before it ever gets passed. You know, we've been looking at it already, but.
Right. You guys have done a lot of legwork for it and.
Right.
I feel that we could finish it here and not have to hire Tim Whipple to, to do it.
Might be more of a legality thing than anything else.
Is there an Aaron?
So.
Aaron be involved in it at all?
Well, I, I mean, I'll assist however I can. But I mean, if you're going to hire somebody who's there to this process, then they, they gotta be the one in charge. I mean, especially since I'm saying, I don't have the expertise to do it.
Okay.
I haven't seen the engagement letter you guys are talking about. If you might review it, make sure it is broad enough that it covers what you think it covers.
Are you saying the engagement letter doesn't? Says you don't want to communicate your work with?
Right.
So the representation does not include advice or services regarding accounting, tax, engineering. So he's not going to get involved in engineering, that's you.
But, but it has to do with the, the ordinances and the pipelines. And I can assure you that Tim Whipple is very involved with the other counties, their engineers and their supervisors on, you know, in, in getting the initial documents in place.
I just read what he has on the document.
I just saw he'd get in, get him on board because we're going to need him in the future with the Nelson Law Life. They want to go for that and we're going to need him, his expertise to stop that.
So if I can interject for a moment, you referenced the, the letter from Nyakog. And he was at the meeting, the planning and zoning meeting the other night. Maybe Rita can, can confirm or deny. But when asked what his suggestion was, what was his guidance as far as who to enlist for, for this purpose?
Well, as he said, he, he was not qualified.
Correct.
That's why he had moved on to get someone that was.
Right. And his suggestion, if I'm not mistaken, and they didn't record that meeting, was that Tim Whipple is very key in many of these issues. And if you're going to enlist the help of someone to write your documents, you are much better to do so with some consistency of process and implement your fees that have some updates to them and have some bite that your engineer can endorse.
The supervisors are, are elected by the people of Mitchell County and they are to represent the people who elected them. Now, don't just sit back and, oh, well, watch the world turn because sometimes it's going to come and bite you in the tail feathers. And you've got to be upfront, you can't be in the back doing it.
I'd like to add just a couple of other thoughts. I want to second Ms. McCarthy on the aquifer issue. And just as an aside, this whole pipeline is based on moving CO2 to caverns on the East Coast in a process called carbon sequestration, which I will tell you is not a proven technology. They're going to pump it into underground caverns that will leak because everything in nature leaks. So a lot of money will be spent going across our state and other states to move something which is already leaking into the air from ethanol plants to just leak into the air on the East Coast. There's no environmental or safety gain from this pipeline. I want to say in addition, when you consider bringing someone in to help with an ordinance that would address setback, this is a hazardous system. Leaks from this system can harm livestock and people in this county, including fatalities. There is no plan in the state. There is no budget, there are no staff to review the engineering design of this pipeline, including such things as audio assurance procedures used in its construction, detection devices, warning devices, operation of components such as remote valves. There has been no modeling provided about things like potential leaks from this system, where the plumes go, how it relates to terrain, how it relates to wind speed and direction. And there are no plans for such things. Given that, and given the hazard of this system, the consideration of some sort of setback in some legal form seems the minimum our county can do to protect its citizens. I know there are concerns about legal actions. Legal actions have not been universal in the counties that have already passed the ordinances of the type we're discussing. When I consider the risk of a poorly designed and constructed system that may be hazardous to our health as opposed to the risk of a legal action, to me it seems that the biggest risk is the design and installation of a system that may hazard our people with no setback engineered to protect those people. Thank you.
I got a question. Mr. Patterson, you've lived up there pretty much all your life, haven't you?
I'm sorry?
I'm Craig Patterson. You've lived up there pretty much all your life, haven't you?
Well, I moved clear over to Spacyville about 30 years ago, I guess.
You had an irrigation system up there, didn't you?
I did.
How deep was that well?
204 to 6 feet deep.
And when you were pumping water, did any of the neighbors run out of water?
But they had a weller's log and they kept track of everything to fill in that well. It's geological and we opened pump it across before we even see that I had enough water because they didn't believe we had enough water there. And I opened pumped it for 48 hours straight out there, run across the road. They gave me a permit. I think I had the last 10-year permit in Mitchell County or State of Iowa. But, but I'm so worried about this, just like what he said about it leaking, getting in our tile lines. And that's some plastic tile. We got a lot of plastic tile up there to perforate, a lot of farm, and tile. And my insurance man was out there yesterday doing some other work. And I asked him, what's going to happen if that leaks? I says, are we going to have, are you guys going to ensure our tile lines? And he said, no, absolutely. He says, I don't think so. But everything's kind of in the air. And of course, it's all underground.
So what do we do as landowners if something happens on our land that if not our, to our fault that was forced on us, but our insurance company isn't going to cover any of the damage?
She's going.
Well, it's a problem to really consider.
It's, it's, it is.
The other thing is, since this is our Torrey leak and the Federal Bureau that's responsible for the rules, they got so many comments on that that they said, well, I guess our rules aren't sufficient. They have not promulgated those rules. They're not finalized, they haven't been passed out. So there is no rule right now governing the pipeline to make it safer than what they originally had. And that was why Summit was trying to rush through and get pipeline started before they ever, ever came across with the new rules. Nothing's happened yet. So there are no rules governing better safety.
I'd like to add to the conversation.
All right.
Um, so local governments have, they've traditionally exercised broad powers to regulate land use, including setbacks and property development. And this is from PMSA, which is the Pipeline Hazardous Materials and Safety Administration, what she was just speaking of. And it says that each community affected by an existing or proposed pipeline faces unique risks. The effective control and mitigation of such risks involves a combination of measures employed by a facility, by facility operators, regulatory bodies, community groups, and individual members of the community. As a pipeline release can impact individuals, businesses, property owners, and the environment, it is important that all stakeholders carefully consider land use and development plans to make risk-informed choices that protect the best interests of the public and the individual parties involved. Bringing a pipeline into a community is often a complicated endeavor that requires tremendous coordination and open communication among stakeholders to be successful. And so I just want to add to that, that what I've heard from the folks in the room is that there's risk. There's, and, and they're concerned of the risk and they want to know who's, who's looking into that. And so if we're looking at, at these ordinances, I think we also need to be asked, what has the county done for risk assessment? So if you're going to say, if a person's going to say, no, we don't want this, then how has that been determined? So that's my question, like, what, what kind of risk assessment has been done? Because these projects that are coming in, whether it be hydrogen hubs or Bitcoin facilities or data centers or that, they're, they're new and they bring new issues and new risks that have to be looked at in a comprehensive way on how they're going to impact the areas. And so the, the decisions that are made for ordinances to be put in, they have to be looked at in a, in a comprehensive way on how these, these impacts are affecting. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Chairman?
I was wondering now, when we were talking, like, Betty had talked about and that question that I have thought different times. One thing before I get too into it, you got to remember, people, these people, this is multi-billion dollar company. They don't care about your county. They could care less if half the people die from a leak or whatever. It's irrelevant. But at the same time, yeah, it's all money, it's all money. And that, the thing I think about, supposedly our EMTs, fire departments, they don't have any facilities to go to a leak or whatever, something that happens. You're going to lose all that. The thing I wonder about, so we got a pipeline going in by Charles City or somewhere south or whatever, here prevailing winds. And they have nothing to work with. There's nothing out there for those people to fight or control where it's at. So getting back to where, you know, it's a big money deal. Say, why, why are we going to have it for this industry? No, if you got a bad leak and nobody knows until it's there. Anybody that was in the military, you know, nerve gas or whatever, and you don't know until you got people dropping beside you. The thing is, it moves in the air, whichever direction the wind is. And that, people say, well, we got to have it for whatever industry. So here comes the old sage. Pipeline was down by Charles City or farther south. People say, well, we got to have it. How many school children do you want to drop on the floor? Because it's in the school, you don't know it's there. You have no way to resource or do anything to handle it or whatever. It's unseen and that, but it's too late. How many children? You can fight it all you want, but big money is going to decide. So if you don't say no, or whatever you can do to say, no, we don't want it, and get other groups, people, states, what's going to happen when that big cave out west there, we're going to pump all this too? When that gets sold? Well, where's it going to go then? Well, we get the right of way, we're going to keep pushing it through. You're stuck. And that, but your fighting is the big, big corporation. But the thing I think about all the time, and that you have a leak, how many school kids? You're going to lose half your school kids, Charles City, Old Sage, Riceville? You can't stop it, it's there. It's in the air and you can shut the valve off, but it's still in the air. So it, yeah, I don't have an answer. I don't think it's necessary and that, you know. you're helpless. And even if you talk to different groups of people, or try and get some laws changed or whatever, they're going to find a way around, I don't know. I don't have an answer, but I hate to think what would happen if the leak was there. And from what I've read, like you said, you know, the tube is only, you know, about that big. The seals, the joints aren't good, and that, you know, leaks there, or whatever, somebody digs into something, whatever, and causes a leak. How many of those lines we got to have? Are they absolutely necessary? For who? The group of people sitting here? Or is it for the board meeting, wherever? No, I don't know, but it, my thinking in that, it's a no, and that, but no matter what they tell you, it's all about corporate money. And that, so that's my thought.
Money talks louder than common sense.
What?
Money talks louder than common sense.
Yeah? Oh, yeah.
The gentleman behind you first.
We had a chance to see those samples of what those pipes looked like up in St. Ansgel, and that mean. And of course, assuming that a question, if something happens, it's when it's going to happen, you know? Because, you know, these pipes, these seals, they're just man-made objects that were meant to do a certain purpose. What's not in the calculus there is that there are larger forces of nature that are moving in the earth all the time. I spent my whole life in earthquake, hurricane, hurricane country. When there's a quake of any sort, five hundred miles away, it's still enough to rock things so that you're afraid your house is going to fall down. Well, nobody talks about earthquakes here in mid-America, but it doesn't mean that that's not going to happen, because it has happened. We have a major fault line in the Mississippi Valley. When that new Madrid fault next acts up, and it's been since early nineteenth century, the last time it happened. But with that quake move down by St. Louis, it knocked stuff over in New York City and Boston. So it's not that these people are evil people that want to do this, they're trying to solve one kind of problem for pollution. Is this the right solution? This technology, the underground pipes, which we know ultimately will fail. That really is not in question. It's just man-made stuff. It's not going to last forever. And so when that happens, all hell is going to bubble up there upon us, our aquifers. And there's no going back from that. The soil, and on a much lesser degree, in this generation than the next, our soil and our farmland is all being ripped up in the process. It's not good for us. You have to admire the people trying to solve problems of carbon sequestration. This is probably not yet there, the research isn't there. And so why should we put our generational homeland on the line in that gamble? This has to be, the line has to be drawn. Let them research it all out first. Let's get the aquifers measured. Let's see what the impacts of it are. And in the first place, a generation from now, is this even going to be a necessary technology? Or will we help with some of these carbon issues in other ways? We've got bigger issues to deal with, climate, earthquakes.
Do they even know what shelf life for these joints and pipe is?
I have no idea, but I looked at that pipe, I held it in hand.
So since we're still talking about the CO2 and pipeline, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring up as well. And I think there's a sense that the federal government's going to help us out, or the state level, and Betty pointed to that with the Safety Board, where it was brought up in Antarctica, where there is people on that federal committee had taken the, with those thoroughly outs, and then a couple retired, the draft had been tabled. It's not even, that was addressing some of these issues. So our safety concerns are not being addressed in this, at this point in time. So again, that was our concern, at least at this level. I think at the state level, we have this vision of eminent domain is going to come and rescue us. And, you know, it's been a hot topic, and in twenty-three, it passed the House. It never got brought up to the Senate. If you've been reading in the DuPont Register, or what's going on there. Once again, the House had passed it, Republicans wanted it brought to the floor. But again, and I've got the man's name, I can't even say it, it's Booz 2-Flot. I don't know his name.
About six thirty-nine.
Okay, well.
The Senate rejected him.
So, yeah, I mean, he's the one that rewrote the amendments, and it's reported that it is basically gutted, the eminent domain piece of it. So if you think about the politics in this, this particular senator, he was the chief of staff for Terry Branstad, and if you read up on the Summit site, he has been hired by Summit. So he is, he's part of Summit, and the, he was lieutenant governor to Kim Reynolds. I mean, these people are very, very politically connected. And again, this senator was the, let's see, he was, he worked for Summit, as he was a Summit agricultural group. So again, when you think of the political ties, and if you think our state government is going to help us or save us, even with the amount of people that are showing up there, I am not confident that that is going to happen. And so again, it just brings us down to this local level, all with the amount of people that show up to these, concerning this topic. If more, if more people really heard or were involved in their daily life, like the stakeholders, the landowners that are involved, I think these meetings would be even more attended. It's to this point where, you know.
Please suddenly mute yourself while you're talking.
I do believe, you know, we are legally pushed up against the wall here, if that's where we're at, you know, in this. I don't think any, I don't think that there's many people that think this is going to be a good thing. I think it's a fear of what the cost may be that people are going to be afraid of it, but there's times when you have to push back.
Okay, hold on. I just want to say that part we're relying on you, because we can't rely on the state. We have a motion, is there any more discussion between the board supervisors right now? We have a motion, we've done a lot of talking.
Sir.
I just want to say that I talked to a lot of you in the room, and I'm going into this, again, you probably get tired of it, with an open mind. I'm listening to both sides, because that's what I was voted in, when my constituents voted me in, to make sure that I make the right decision. I think we're a long ways from the pipeline coming in. There's a lot of moving parts, and I'm, I don't want to spend a lot of money and leave it sitting, and having to keep going back to our attorneys. And when I've got these letters, emails, that nobody's doing anything at the state level with these, I think we're at a standstill. So I'm, I'm going to make my decision, and I hope that you guys will support me as making my decision and continue working with this and listening to both sides. That's, that's, I just, I want to keep listening to both sides. I have to, that's the reason, I was voted in, so.
You come and be involved, but you don't, you can listen to the side that has been voted you in, not the side, the other side.
That's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get, that's, my chair asked if there was anything the board wanted to say.
Any other comments from the board?
I just, I just want to reiterate that my hope is that we do the letter of engagement, and that we make the right-of-way ordinance and those fees the number one, first focus of our engagement, because that is not related to any particular entity, but it is also protecting from any private entity. Keep in mind, Iowa's already been targeted for hydrogen capture. And you just need to pull up the geological map, and we're right there in blue. So we need, we need to step ahead and protect our infrastructure first and foremost, that's my feeling.
Any else from the board? Room call?
Room call.
Joe. Room call, Tom.
No.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney. Hi. Jim?
No.
Motion passes. Discussion about full action to engage with Alders, I have never seen that, community for human resources and labor legal services.
It is Alders, I did ask that.
Rachel.
So this is, we talked last week about the payroll getting on my schedule. That was their legal term for the heading. And has done this with a few different counties, just getting going. Talking with Franklin, so the resolution, I got that, that will, it comes after. We need to engage with Ann to help her, she will help us create that, basically, so. And she didn't give me a timeframe. I don't think it's too in-depth, though, as far as the previous letter of engagement that you guys talked about. She has an hourly rate of three fifteen per hour. If I was to guess, it shouldn't take a few hours.
So this is just specific to that payroll issue?
Correct.
Long-term?
No, it's just this one. Yep.
Right.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Jim made a motion, is there a second?
I second that.
And second, any further discussion? Room call, Pam.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passing. I actually need to go back to the action for the Tim Whipple, because we had a motion, but then we had an amended motion. So which one are we, did we motion for? Did we motion for Mark? Or did we a motion for the amended motion that Pam made? Because now I'm confused.
I didn't know Pam made an amendment.
She did, I moved it.
And so now I need, I don't know which one, which, which one did you write?
I have them both wrote down.
Well, that's not, yeah. State it again, please.
Wait.
Can you state what Pam wrote?
Well, I have a note to go back at the time, and my camera's right down on the motion.
Okay. I don't know which one we voted on.
I would say the latest one that you made.
The amended, the amended. But was there a second to the amendment?
There wasn't a second to the amendment.
There wasn't, and you amended it, and we didn't do a second, and so I think we need to do a
A formal.
A revote, I'm sorry. So Pam, what was your comment?
So I moved to amend that we engaged Tim Whipple, and that we prioritize the right-of-way ordinance and accompanying fees.
But you didn't, well, hold on. Is this the reason for the amendment? Because you're not sure if we would have to have a different engagement letter from Tim Whipple?
We don't have to have a different engagement letter, but in order to perhaps streamline the right-of-way ordinance, I'm just stating that that would be our number one priority. His engagement letter encompasses all of the things that they talked about. Development of permits for highway right-of-way, permitting, surveying activities, any of those things. The board of supervisors determines what items to focus on first. That his primary focus, first and foremost, be the right-of-way ordinance and accompanying fees.
Okay, Pam. Pam made a motion, is there a second?
Don't second that.
Mark, second. Any further discussion on the amended motion? Room call, Tom.
No.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim?
No.
Motion passing. Meetings attended.
I had a, I forgot to report on this last week, a community health needs assessment meeting. The main topic was the change in social service, kind of social services, and how that's going to negatively impact our county. One of the reasons why it's going to be on next week's agenda for the board to discuss. I think I was leaving that for that meeting. And I had a city council meeting last night, I'll say city council meeting. We just went through closing the road for, in town, for an event that's going to be happening. Citywide cleanup is going to be May fifth through the eighth. It's going to be done by Ward. Discuss the airport improvements in regards to payment from the state by eighty percent, and locals, as far as twenty percent's going to be ARPA dollars. Set a date for updating their renewable plan, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Wednesday evening. I believe Amanda shared what was the results of that meeting.
There's a Shell Rock watershed meeting, and they're going to combine Winnebago with the Shell Rock watersheds to get more resources. And July thirteenth through the eighteenth, they're going to flow down the Winnebago and the Shell Rock and pick up trash out of the rivers. And this Thursday, there's a wetland field day in Mitchell County for a wetland project that they're doing.